All right, for real call, we have everybody here. Obviously, Mr. Parker resigned, so we're going to interview tonight. Executive session, we did have an executive session. Wait, how many days do we have these on? Announced we had an executive session held prior to this meeting to discuss personnel. Now, we're going to move on to the activities for the evening, the interviewing candidates for vacant board seats. So first, I'm going to explain a little bit of what's going to happen tonight to the public, so everybody gets an understanding of what we're going to do. We have seven candidates that are going to apply for, to replace Bill Parker. Each candidate is going to come in, and they're going to be asked three, the exact same questions. They're going to give themselves an introduction, they're going to have the three questions, and if the board feels they need, they will ask one follow-up. We're going to try to streamline this, because we've done this many, many times, and sometimes it's not gone as well as we would like. We want this to be more interactive and more with everybody else. Now, we will not discuss those seven candidates after they are done, we will move to the agenda. The reason for that is they also have a list of questions that they're filling out written answers for. Those answers will be on and displayed on the district's website for everybody to see. The idea behind that is, this is a two-year commitment that someone's going to be replacing Bill Parker. We want the community to be involved in that. So instead of us just simply coming in, interviewing seven people, talking to amongst ourselves amongst that, and then immediately saying, "This is the person we vote for," we're going to open this up. We want all of us to see all their different responses, we want to have the opportunity to watch the video, we also want the community to have the opportunity to watch the videos and to read the responses as well. In the next board meeting, on February 8th, that's when we will discuss to everybody, we will make a vote, but we will also have public comments for anybody that wants to publicly comment their support or however on any of the candidates. So that's how we're going to proceed with everything. We're going to start, we're going to go in an order of exactly how we receive the applicants. So it's just simply going to be whoever said it in first is first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and seventh. All right? So if you want to bring in the first, I don't know who's bringing in the candidates. Bring in our first candidate?
Good evening. I'm David Finnerty, Superintendent. Thank you for applying. We're going to have three questions for you today. If you could, please state your name and your borough of residence.
My name is Denise Takachi, and I live in Lower Pots Grove.
Okay. Okay. So all of our board members have your resume and letter of interest, but if you could please briefly share your involvement in the community?
Absolutely. I have been living in Lower Pots Grove since 2016. I bought a home here and decided this was going to be the place where I will retire. I have a business where I am a licensed professional counselor, I have a private practice. Throughout my career, I have worked with clients who lived in the district. I got to know a lot of people in the district and decided that this was a great community, and I wanted to be involved with it. I did want to, this past November, run for the Board of Commissioners. I did not get that position, but I do have this desire to serve my community, because I believe this is a great and wonderful community.
Thank you. Question two, why do you want to be on the board?
I want to be on the board because I think that I have a lot to offer. I believe in the education of our students. I'm an educator myself, I teach undergrad students online, and having worked with children all my life, or my career actually, I think there's a lot that I can offer, not only as a therapist, but as an educator. As a therapist, I've worked with a lot of kids who needed IEPs or 504s, and I've seen that many of them struggled with making sure that the kids are educated, and I just wanted to make sure that I can, I would say, provide input to the board as to these types of situations, especially when it comes to child development, mental health, situations like that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Last question. What school district issues do you believe need the most attention, and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
I think right now, we're trying to get through a pandemic, we're trying to keep our kids in school. I see many kids who are struggling academically because of switching back and forth from virtual to in-person, and I think collaboration is needed, not only between the board, but the community, the teachers, to make sure that our kids have a safe environment to learn, because what I know about a child's brain when they're stressed, they can't learn. So we need to make sure that if we're going to have them in school, they have to be able to stay in school and be safe in school. And it's going to take collaboration, not only with the board, but also our community, our teachers, and our students, to be able to get that job done. Where we have teacher shortages that are affecting our students' learning, and we just need to make sure that we can provide the environment for our kids to learn.
Is there anyone on the board that wants to give one follow-up question?
After two years of COVID, there's been a lot of attention, which we've heard, directed to the learning loss and the deficits associated with virtual learning. What do you see as a potential solution or the outcome of dealing with that loss?
I think that it's important that we put in place support systems for our students to make up that deficit, whether it's increase the amount of tutoring that's available, but being able to support our students to bring them up to where they need to be. They have lost, for many of the students, they have lost some of their education because of the switching back and forth. I know many of my clients who struggled when we were all virtual, because not every student is able to learn virtually, even without a pandemic. I've had students that, whose families tried to get them to do cyber school, and they just couldn't do it. So we have to make sure that we can provide the supports in place, whether, like I said, tutoring, anything like that, that will help bring our students up to where they need to be educationally and academically.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, like I said, once you finish these questions, you're welcome to leave, because we're not going to discuss anything, but you're also welcome to join us for the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you.
Hello, sir. I'm Dr. Finnerty, Superintendent of Pots Grove School District. Thank you for putting yourself forward as a potential board candidate. We have three questions for you this evening, and the board may ask you a fourth question. Before we get started, if you can go ahead and say your name and your township of residence.
Name is Robert, middle initial is W, last name is Boyce, B-O-Y-C-E, and I'm in Lower Pots Grove Township.
Okay. We do have your resume and letter of interest, but if you please could briefly share your involvement in the community?
This community, I entered 30 years ago when I retired from the military and assumed the position as the plant manager for the limerick generating station. During that time, I was involved in everything from church commitments to Boy Scouts, also a soccer coach, and I was there in that position, or the position of Director of Quality, for the last part of my time. I retired from there, and I always wanted to teach, but with nine children, I had to find, A, the time, and B, the money. So after retiring twice, I assumed the position of Teacher of Advanced Sciences at Malvern Preparatory School for Boys, where I taught for 16 years. And during that time, I founded the Science National Honor Society there, I was interned, I was the founder of the robotics program that competed nationally there with the boys. I was heavily involved in the sciences, as well as I was the soccer coach for six years in my free time. After 16 years, I thought I retired, and then I got hoodwinked into teaching at Archbishop Carroll High School in Radnor, where they needed to revitalize their physics program, and I did that for a year that lasted five years. And finally, last spring, I really retired after a year of wonderful teaching, remote, local, whatever. My other community interests during that time, I'm heavily involved in the Knights of Columbus, I'm involved in St. Al Whishus Parish programs, I teach, I'm a catechist at their program, and I kind of do whatever somebody asks me to do, which my favorite saying is, "Being retired is a full-time job, because I have no excuse for saying no."
Okay. Thank you. Question two, why do you want to be on the board?
I find, because of what I've done, whether it was in the military or not, the quality of young Americans is essential to the future of this nation, and that begins in elementary, middle, and high school. And the, in particular, the high schools, but all of those, need to be assured to be successful by a strong board. And so, when I had the time to do this, I said, "I think I can bring my 21 years of education, my years of managing a major program, a limerick station." And while I was in the Navy, I commanded two of its submarines, one of the Fleet ballistic missile submarines, fast attack submarines, and I was a major program manager of a billion-dollar-a-year program. So I got to see young people going to college, coming out of college, out in the trades, and I felt that I could bring an independent, differentiated view of education to the board. And when the opportunity came with the opening, I had already considered running for the position in the next election that's available, but I said, "I'll throw my hat in the ring, because I think I bring that, and I have the time to do it."
What school district issues do you believe need the most attention, and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
That would have been a hard question two years ago. Today, the board, and with what is going on throughout the United States, in the Commonwealth locally, the biggest issue is assuring we get our students back in school full-time with their teachers, because I have found in my many years that that interpersonal relationship with the students allowed me and the students to develop what they wanted to do the rest of their life. So I think the job that the school board has is to assure that we're back in school, to assure that the triumvirate of student, teacher, student, parent, and teacher, that triangle is strong. As you know, the triangle won't work if you break any part of it. And the board is that association that assures that triangle is working. So I think the most important thing is to figure out which set of alphabet letters really has the best answer, I can't say they're correct, because they're probably, of what has to be done to assure that no later, absolutely no later, that next fall, our school district is 100% in place with the students and teachers.
Do we have anybody on the board that would like a follow-up question? You have. All right, hearing none. Chuck, if you have one? Is that a yes or no? Not moving. Dr. Nipper? Do you have a follow, you looked at me like you had a follow-up question. Do you have a follow-up question? Thank you very much.
Hello, are you Mr. Hitt?
That is correct.
Hello. Thank you for putting yourself forward as a candidate for this opening. I'm Dr. Finnerty, Superintendent. Tonight, we have three questions here, and you may get asked a follow-up question by a board member. But before we get started, if you can just say your name and your township of residence, please.
Sure, it's Kevin Hitt, Upper Pots Grove.
Okay. Okay. First question. We have your resume and your letter of interest, but if you could, please briefly share your involvement in the community?
My involvement in the community has mostly been related to autism charities, since our son is autistic. The last couple of years, we've done fundraisers for the Eagles Huddle Up for Autism. One year, we were actually featured in Pots Town Mercury, and the Eagles did a little video of us on their website as well. Also, through my employer, we do a variety of charity work with Opportunity House and some other Salvation Army stuff as well.
Why do you want to be on the board?
I feel that with our son being autistic and receiving services from the board, it would be a great opportunity for someone to be on the board who's experienced that and would bring some knowledge to what I feel is an underrepresented segment of the student population here.
What school district issues do you believe need the most attention, and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
I feel right now, obviously, the biggest thing that's affecting the school and everybody is COVID. I wouldn't say I'm a COVID expert, I'm a very analytical person, I look at the various data that's available from you guys as the administrators, but comes from county, input from parents, so we can make the best decisions to make sure that the kids can attend school, preferably in person, as many days as possible, until maybe COVID ends eventually.
Does anyone on the board have an additional follow-up question? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for your time.
Good evening, Mr. Bickert.
Good evening.
Thank you for putting yourself forward as a candidate for the school board opening. Tonight, we have three questions here, and there may be an additional follow-up question from one of the board members. But before we get started, if you could just state your name and your township of residence?
Sure. My name is Tony Bickert, and I live in Lower Pots Grove Township.
Okay. We have your resume and letter of interest, but if you could please briefly share your involvement in the community?
Sure. Well, as you know, I live in the district. I have two children that went through the Pots Grove School District. My daughter graduated in 2015, and my son graduated in 2018. I've been involved with the district through working for the district for about a little over 21 years, and have been able to work with all the great teachers and staff members and, you know, be part of moving the district forward over the last 21 years.
Okay. Why do you want to be on the board?
It's a great question. Having worked for the district so long and contributing and being a part of it, now that I'm no longer working for the district, I still want to contribute and be a part of this great community, and I thought being able to, you know, give back by being on the school board would be a great way to do that and stay involved.
What school district issues do you believe need the most attention, and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
Well, I think there's a lot of issues that need attention, and that's why we're here, that's why everyone comes to work every day and is a part of the overall operation. Specifically, I think the budget certainly needs attention, that's something that is always a work in progress and an evolving, living, breathing thing, kind of. So I would help contribute to that, because I have experience, you know, with the technology budget, certainly in my current position, I work with a large budget as well, so I think I can bring that knowledge and experience into this position here.
All right, on this follow-up question, I'm actually going to ask it.
Okay.
You, obviously, well-qualified, you're a director in another school district, we're a director here, right? And have a lot of friends in this school district. Can you definitely, 100% certainty, can separate your friendships you have here and you built with who you're representing of the community and those? Because you're coming from a district now, North Penn, much larger, a lot more resources. Here, we may not have the exact same resources. I want to make sure on your personal, that you can actually separate the two.
Absolutely. I believe I can, I believe you have to in a position like this, and I think I would be able to do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, sir. Are you Mr. Thompson?
I am.
Thank you, sir, for putting yourself forward as a potential school board member. We have three questions for you, with a possible fourth follow-up question from board members. Before we get started, if you could state your name and your township of residence, please.
Bill Thompson, and I live in Upper Pots Grove.
Okay. We have your resume and your letter of interest, but if you could, please briefly share your involvement in the community?
Most of my involvement in the community has been through community theater. I was a scout leader when my son was involved in scouts, and my wife and I led the music ministry at St. Al's for a number of years.
Why do you want to be on the board?
I think it's important to give back to the community, and I think that education is one of the most important things that the government can do, and the state has set things up the way they have with school boards, and I think that I can make a contribution and would like to do so while I still have kids in school.
Okay. What school district issues do you believe need the most attention, and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
Wow, the most, I mean, curriculum needs attention, safety needs attention, supporting the extracurricular activities needs attention, protecting the taxpayers needs attention. I'm a pretty good moderator, I can look at both sides of a question, and I think that, I mean, because none of, you're never going to make all of the constituencies happy, but you can make them less unhappy, and if they're all about the same level of less unhappy, you win.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the board that would like a follow-up question? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Corman.
Good evening, everyone. School board members, Dr. Finnerty, thank you for having me.
Thank you for putting yourself forward.
Absolutely.
We have three questions here, and a potential fourth follow-up question from the board members, but if you could, before we get started, just state your name and your township of residence, please.
Andrew Corman, Upper Pots Grove Township.
Okay. We have your resume and letter of interest, but if you could, please briefly share your involvement in the community?
Sure, absolutely. So as a 16-year resident of the community, not only myself, but my So as a 16-year resident of the community, not only myself, but my family, both my boys and my wife, we're very involved locally at the community church, Hope Community Church in Gilbertsville. Both my boys are athletically involved or have been athletically involved through cross-country, swimming. My youngest is involved in theater as well as Boy Scouts, so we're very, very close-knit in the community, and we love it. We absolutely love it here.
Why do you want to be on the board?
So mainly, I want to be on the board to stand for the silent. Most recently, there's been a lot of people that have been canceled, and I feel like recently, since May of 2021, I've been standing courageously specifically about health and safety. There are other issues at hand that have come about because of this pandemic, including staff shortages and what will happen in the future for work-related issues. And I think the school district needs to understand what is happening with the Fourth Industrial Revolution that's underway.
What school district issues do you believe need the most attention and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
So outside of health and safety and staff shortages, I really believe that the school district needs to start looking at preparing the students and the staff for the future. And this includes, you know, learning about robotics, if there's any, and I don't know if there's any curriculum around that, but I do know that the school that I attended in high school, they do have a robotics, like a whole robotics department, and then look at artificial intelligence as well. And this will not only help the students' intellectual quotient, it will also help their emotional quotient and navigate their, you know, their lives and how to negotiate, you know, with the workplace and, you know, just throughout life in general.
Thank you. Is there any follow-up questions from anybody on the board? Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Are you Debbie?
I am Debbie.
I'm sorry, is it Ramilius?
It is Ramilius.
Okay, all right. Good evening. I'm Dr. Finerty Superintendent, and I want to thank you for putting yourself forward to be a potential board member. Tonight, we have three questions with a potential fourth question, a follow-up question from the board, okay? But before we get started, if you could just state your name and your borough of residence, please.
My name is Debbie Ramilius. I live in Upper Pots Grove. Do you want the street address? No? Okay, Upper Pots Grove Township.
Yep. So we do have your resume and letter of interest, but if you please could briefly share your involvement in the community.
Okay, well, as I said in my letter of interest, I guess it started when we moved here like 20-something years ago. My children started school here, and we became involved through the band, through the music. I subbed through the district until last year. I volunteer through my church. I volunteer at Barth Elementary. We did until COVID hit. I also am involved in my church with, you know, hospitality in which we reach out to the community to encourage people to come to come visit. I'm an elder and was a deacon on my church as well. So I've tried to stay involved through the communities, either through our church or through the, or through the school when our children were in school.
Why do you want to be on the board?
Because I want to make a difference. I mean, I've been in education for years, and I'm really, my drive is to help students achieve all the potential that they can be, and I want to give back to the community. This is the community in which we've lived for 20-something years. You know, my children live in the area. I have a connection to it through friends and family, and so I think it's a way that I can make a difference, a small difference. You know, you don't always have to make a large difference to make things matter. You know, you just make those little small differences, and you have those little effects, and that's why I'd like to be on the board.
What school district issues do you believe need the most attention and why are you the best candidate to help address them?
I think that we, all districts, need to work toward ensuring that all of our students, regardless of race, regardless of socioeconomic backgrounds, manage to succeed. Sometimes we need to, we need to reach out, we need to be willing to learn about other cultures within our community. We need to extend ourselves to others. I'm really, as an educator, I want all of our students in this community to be successful. I don't want them to feel that they're being left behind. I'm reading some interesting information about education right now, and some of it's very disturbing. I also think it's, and I know that that's nothing necessarily that we can do, is the funding that is given to schools, that we, we don't have the required funding that we should get when you compare it to other schools. And again, that is something that needs to be done through Harrisburg and whatever, but I want to, I want to work with encouraging and helping that our students become successful. They're our future.
Thank you. Does anybody have any follow-up questions?
Yeah, follow-up.
Go ahead.
The virtual education that was used during the pandemic has caused a learning deficit in students. What do you see as the possible solutions or approaches to dealing with that deficit?
Well, I, you know, I, I home schooled a student during that time. When the pandemic hit, I was subbing here, and then things, you know, went crazy. And my next-door neighbor was not prepared to send her daughter back to school. I mean, her granddaughter, she's raising her granddaughter, was not prepared to send her granddaughter back to school, so she did virtual learning. And first, I want to say that I, it's hard. Like, for the teachers, it is extremely difficult for them to teach in class and across Zoom. I think we need to, as a community, I think we need to, and I don't, I don't think, I mean, I think this virtual learning is here. I mean, I think it's here to stay in one form or the other. I think we need to help our children by preparing them, by working with them, either through engagement with tutors, with tutoring, to help them get back up to speed, because it's really no fault of their own. And some students do better in a class, and some students do fine out of school. So there, for those students who are struggling, I think we need to make some sort of conscious effort to have tutoring available, to help reach out to families who are struggling, if there's some way to do that, so that their children can continue to succeed and continue to learn without falling behind.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So that is all the candidates that submitted their application prior to the deadline. As we said at the start of the meeting, but maybe was not heard by the candidates who were in the other room, is there's going to be no more discussion or decision tonight about the position. That is going to be on our agenda at the next meeting.
I do want to thank all of, let me make sure I'm right, yep. I do want to thank all of the candidates. Anybody that's out there, that seat right there, sitting there in front of us, answering even just those three questions, then going back, answering these additional 11 questions, and being put on the spot is probably the most difficult thing you can imagine a person doing, especially when you're doing it in public. We probably have all been interviewed by somebody, but we don't get interviewed by the public, get it taped, and then pretty much going to have everybody discuss everything about you at the next meeting. So I commend all seven people that put their name on board, because it's a lot easier to put my name down to be elected than it is to sit there and get drilled for 10, 15 minutes. So thank you very much to all seven candidates. All right, we're going to move on. Public comment. Now, I have two public comments, but we know, no health and safety, so second area. Do I have anybody else for public comment for anything on the agenda? Since health and safety isn't there, we're going to do that at the second. Is there anybody in the public? No. Anybody here? No. All right, so we're going to move on to reported superintendent.
Thank you. This evening, I'd like to talk about three items. These are all goal areas, well, mostly goal areas. We have, the first item is parent, staff, and community surveys. So we have completed our surveys for parents, staff, and community members. I want to thank the parents who have shared the feedback. We did leave the parent survey live. It is still live on our website. You can get it through either my last two blogs. It's also been in principal messages home. One early theme is to continue to improve student achievement. We will be surveying students using questions from the PA Climate Survey. The survey questions will be shared with parents to administer, prior to administering to students. And then once we get all of the surveys, we'll be meeting as a team to go through the data and to look at what items we, the feedback that we're getting from all community members and identify areas that we need to work additionally. So we'll be back reporting on that, and we will be posting the results of the survey to our website. Second item is comprehensive plan. So a comprehensive plan is, it is a requirement of the Pennsylvania Department of Education that we do this every three years. So due to the COVID pandemic, our timeline has been thrown a little, is thrown off a little bit, but the process will involve parents, teachers, business, community members. The process uses characteristics of consistently high-performing institutions as a guide to design the plan. Pots Grove School District Plan is due on March 30th, 2022. We are currently creating a team, and we'll welcome the input of anyone interested in participating. Committee member, I'm sorry, committee meetings will be held on February 7th and February 24th from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the high school LGI. Anyone interested, we ask you to reach out to Daniel Voorhees or our building principals. And the last thing I want to talk about is our after-school tutoring. The district is creating after-school tutoring programs, and they will occur in each building. This is a district goal. This is an effort to address learning loss that has occurred as a result of the pandemic. Students will be identified and invited to participate based on multiple established criteria. The criteria may include assessment results, current course performance, teacher recommendations, or students currently in isolation. Participating students will work directly with our staff members in small group setting after school, and structure for students will be designed specifically for what that student currently needs. As students are identified, we will communicate with families with specific information. Students may be invited to participate Monday through Thursday, and this program will run February through April based upon need. The high school program is already up and running. Remaining buildings are aiming to have communication out to families within the next week. So those are my three items for this evening.
Thank you. We're going to move on to action items personnel.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve action items personnel, 6.1 to 6.4.
I have a motion and a second to approve all action items for personnel. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Action passes, move to action items business.
Item seven, action items business. Item 7.1. This is to approve the release of $5 million from the committed fund balance for the retirement rate increases. Over the past 10 years, the district has accumulated roughly $6.5 million to defray the increasing costs of the Pennsylvania State Employment Retirement System, also called PISers. In recent years, the increases in the employer rate from PISers have stabilized and are projected to be less than .5 percentage points for the next several years. Since the rate increases are not as large as they were, some of these funds can be reallocated to support other district priorities. The administration is recommending changing the purpose of the commitment.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any discussions or comments?
If there aren't any discussions, I'd like to make a motion to table this till the next meeting.
I have a motion and a second to table. Michelle, I don't think when it comes to table, we have to vote, do we? We have to vote on the motion?
You do not.
So then it's automatically tabled, is that correct?
Correct.
Motion tabled, that means 7.2 is automatically going to be tabled because that was part of 7.1, okay? So we're going to skip 7.2, and we're going to move right to education items, 8.1.
Item eight, action items, education.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve action items, education, 8.1 and 8.2.
I have a motion and a second to combine the two, 8.1 and 8.2 conference intended items. Do I have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, 8.3, the student calendar.
8.3, the, we have a recommended action to approve the student calendar for 2022, 23. This was shared at the last time we were together. I need a motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the 2022, 2023 student calendar. Do I have any questions or comments?
I have a quick question, but it's actually for the calendar we discussed last, last meeting, the, not just the student calendar. The last couple of days in June, were they makeup days for the teachers, like if needed?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, your question's on the revised 21, 22 calendar from last.
Yes, yes, sorry.
Yes, those days are scheduled as potential teacher makeup days, though there are other ways that we can make up those days without having, bringing teachers in on that.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, Don and I have one. In regards to us starting a couple of days early, how is that going to affect the Western Center if the other schools do not start at the exact same time?
That's a great question. So it's very important that the, that our calendar supports Western Center. The CTC program is very important to me personally, and I know I'm not alone in that. So the way the Western Center would make their calendar would be based on the calendars of the three sending districts. If the districts don't align, as they don't align, pretty much every year, there's some misalignment, we would have to work with the Western Center to make sure misalignment, we would have to work with the Western Center to make sure that our kids can get the hours necessarily, necessary for their certifications. I, I have had some preliminary conversations with the new director of the Western Center, and once we have a calendar and they have calendars from the, the other two districts, we can have more substantive conversations about how our, our calendar aligns or doesn't align with the other two sending districts.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to the next item.
Item nine, Committee Items. 9.1, we have approval of policies.
Still moved.
I have a motion and a second to approve, there are, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, there's like eight policies here, right? Yeah, eight policies to approve. Does anybody have any questions or comments about any of these policies?
I was just going to make a comment that these are on our website.
Yep.
So everybody knows.
Yeah, they went through 30-day round.
Yeah, I know, I just want to make sure that everybody knows.
Hearing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes, 9.2.
9.2 is the report of the Operations Facility Committee. Dr. Nipper, sir.
Thank you. First of all, we have a meeting, and I'm going to ask Ron here if he wants to discuss any of the items which were listed, and then I'll have a few comments.
All right, at the operations meeting, we presented the district's 10-year capital plan going up to 2032. Mr. Carrowell presented all the different components that make up that plan and all the, the building infrastructure that need to be touched in the next 10 years. It looks like, on average, we're looking at $5 million a year to spend to get the buildings repaired. He also mentioned that not necessarily everything needs to be done in the timeline. He graded everything based on estimated life of the equipment, as well as how many times he had to repair the equipments. And then, at one point in time, we talked about adding a line item in the budget to have a transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund instead of taking the surpluses at the end of every year and building that into the budget.
Okay, yeah, this is Mr. Carrowell's 10-year plan, and it does not include any enhancements. It is basically maintenance costs. So these are things which we, you know, if you're a homeowner, these are things like repairing the roof, repairing the air conditioning, and so on. So these are things which are maintenance-type items, $55 million spread out over 10 years. I just want to make one personal note. Unfortunately, Mr. Carrowell isn't here today, but he is leaving us, and I have to say something like this. Working with him has been, I've been impressed by his competence and his appreciation, and when you're working with someone who good at their job, and really good, then working with them is not just a pleasure, it's downright fun. And from the roof in the middle school to the bridge, you know, if Jeff were here, we'd probably be breaking up laughing because these were serious matters, but Jeff is very good at what he says and what he does. He's a superb project engineer, and it's been not just a pleasure to work with him, but it's actually been fun. So that's, that's my comment about Jeff, and that's basically all I have to add.
All right, does anybody on the board have any comments? All right, so I do have a question in regards to this, even though I'm on the committee, is do we have to have some type of board action to create this line item?
No, you don't need a board action to create the line item. You basically instructed me to add a line item in the budget to see if we can afford that line item, and during our budget discussions next month, we'll go over that.
So that is the piece I do want the board to, if you're okay with, and I want to make sure everybody's getting like head nods or something like that, as in, as the Facilities Committee works, and as you saw, we're roughly around $53 to $55 million over the next 10 years. Currently, right now, we have the $4.5 billion in there, and it does look like, at this present time, we're probably going to want to start, instead of using just the surpluses to get us to the next level, is create a line item. Now, the Facilities Committee talked about this particular line item when we came to agreement that we needed it, but before, I want to make sure the board is aware of bringing something like that up, and if you guys have any decisions or discussions or any thoughts against such a thing.
Just one last, one last thought here. These items are maintenance, and if we don't do them, which you might be able to do for some of them, that's deferred maintenance, and I don't know how Ron and CPAs deal with deferred maintenance, but to me, that's always a very high-interest loan that's going to fall due sometime. So, yeah, we can defer, you know, maybe you can push the air conditioning for another year or something like that, but you're eventually going to have to deal with it.
So to kind of understand that a little bit for the public, so that you had a good idea, because like I said, my goal is transparency. What Dr. Nipper's talking about is the fact that we have different bonds out there. Obviously, we've had many different bonds that do the high school work and such like that. A school district can always use different bonds and borrowing options to cover capital and such like that, right? But the goal, and I believe I speak for most of the board here, that the goal is to make us so we're not subservient to high-interest bonds, whether they're low-interest, 2-point-some percent, or whatever they may be. In the area of around 2028, we'll be completely debt-free in that area. That's roughly around $4 to $5 billion we'll be able to use. That's an area that we would like to not have to tap into additional bonds if we don't have to. So that's why the Facilities Committee is also talking about creating this line item. Anybody have any questions or issues?
Yeah, just to give you a quick, for instance, one of the items on the high school project is air conditioning, and having replaced the air conditioner in my house this year, this was, this is $3 million, wait a minute, $3.5 million, the boiler replacement is $2.5 million. So we're talking, we're talking a substantial chunk of change. So Jeff did a wonderful job itemizing all this stuff and preparing a rough plan, and I think you got a copy of, not this one, but a 10-year plan.
Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the curriculum, report of the curriculum.
Okay.
9.3, Report of the Curriculum Integration and Technology Committee, Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you. So I kind of have an easy job of reporting tonight because Dr. Finerty, you had covered some of the parts of our meeting, and then Mr. Voorhees and Dr. Ramage were kind enough to wish to kind of round that out with the remainder of the report, and I'm happy to defer because they're the ones really pouring so much time and effort in and bringing the teams together. So who better than to, to report out on that if you, if you don't mind? Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, Mrs. McIntyre. Our Curriculum Integration and Technology Committee met on January 18th. This evening already, Dr. Finerty talked about two of our agenda items, as Mrs. McIntyre mentioned. That included comprehensive plan as well as the after-school tutoring program, so I won't reiterate those particular pieces. An additional agenda item we talked about was our PSAT data, as well as our Advanced Placement, or what we call AP potential. And we talked about that specifically because we get a significant amount of data back from the PSATs. One of the pieces of the data we get from that is potential, that shows potential of our students to participate in AP. And students prior to that may or may not be aware, or families may or may not be aware that they show potential in that particular area. To be very clear about this particular piece, this is not about, let me backtrack a minute, this is a goal of, of the district to increase our participation with AP. But again, to be very clear, it's not just about increasing our numbers within AP. This is more about having a conversation about if students show potential for that particular area, making sure that we provide that as a, as an opportunity for them. Why do we want that to occur here? If a student is college-bound, we want them to be able to take those courses, their first college-level course, with us here. Why is that important? We believe that at a high school level, particularly in our high school, they're going to get a lot of support that they may or may not get at the, the college level. They're certainly still going to have their families involved in that particular piece. There's many support systems that are already in place at the high school level. So we want to make sure that we provide that experience, we communicate that experience, and we provide the support to our students as appropriate. An additional piece that we talked about is our assessment calendar, as well as intervention data. At our November meeting, we talked specifically about what we call benchmarking, which occurs three times a year, through which we look at the same assessments provided to particular populations of students, and we use that data to really talk about how students are achieving and how students are growing. And in the event that we see that they're growing substantially and growing well, we celebrate that and say, well, how do we enrich the opportunities of that particular student in making sure that we push them and grow them even further? If a student's not making the, the amount of growth that we would like to see, what interventions can we put into place to ensure that the child does grow at a particular rate? We, right now, are in the throes of our second administration of benchmarking, so at that time, we'll be able to compare our results from the winter with the fall results, and then our building-level teams really meet together to determine exactly what interventions we need to put in place, how students can be supported in the classroom, classroom teachers will look at that particular data, and making decisions about pacing and instruction and, and how to best meet the needs of all the students that they serve. And Dr. Ramage, would you like to talk about the data dashboard, sir? Any questions?
Question, I did have a question, I was thinking about it. You had said some of our students can, in high school, can take some college entry courses. Do the colleges accept those?
They do.
They do, okay, that's very important.
It really depends upon the college, and it depends upon if students are getting a certain score on an advanced placement exam, and different colleges have different criteria, so to speak. You're welcome.
As Mr. Voorhees mentioned, data dashboard was the other topic of the CIT meeting, and I want to just remind you that in the course of the work, we're aligning these pieces with our district goals. So one of the things about the data dashboard is it lines up with the goal to design and begin implementation of a dashboard to support data-informed instructional practices with both our existing standardized assessments and our locally-created Potsdam School Assessments. So what I like about that, and maybe you drew your attention in the same phrase, but that data-informed instructional practice, it's all about gathering our systems. We have a lot of data, we have a lot of inputs. If it just sits there without really helping us make decisions, I'm not sure that's as useful as it could be for us in terms of moving our kids forward. So the other one that it aligns up with is our, to design and implement a district-wide multi-tiered system of support, you've heard this before, MTSS, if you're keeping track of all your acronyms at home, and that is a way to collect and effectively analyze data that maybe goes beyond our academic data. So this is going to be attendance data, behavioral data. We want to have systems where teachers find an interface that's usable so that they can build these reports or use existing reports, to basically take all this input from our academic achievement, from all the different factors affecting our kids, and then turn this into a way that they can design instruction that's going to help that student move forward well. So we've been meeting as a, a team, about 14 administrators, principals, some key teacher leaders. We've looked at four vendors so far with products that are, you know, have a good reputation or are used across the county. Two of those have risen to the top. We're currently collecting those final quotes from those pieces, and we will, we'll have a decision on that, a recommendation for the CIT Committee the next time we get together is the goal. Any, any questions or comments on that?
I have a question. Is this going to be replacing the MAPS?
MAP would be an example of a standardized assessment that could help populate, we're moving Exact Path is, is a piece you've probably heard at the elementary level, which is similar to MAP, but sort of builds beyond that to actually then provide interventions for where those weaknesses are for our kids and help them move on what's called a learning path. So MAP, or Exact Path, or PSAT data, or SATs, or AmesWeb, or many of the existing assessments that we have currently in place will get amalgamated, will get dumped together in the system, and then analyzed in a way that will help teachers make a choice about what instruction comes next. MAP does that, but just for their assessment. This is something that will do more assessments, including our locally-developed Common Assessments, and, and provide that same kind of support to answer the question, what can I do next to help Dave move forward based on what we're seeing in his profile?
If I could just add to Dr. Ramage's answer, I believe the board is familiar with ECR, this would replace that. This, we're looking for a data dashboard that is going to be more easy to use in the classroom by the teachers instead of having to be interpreted for them. So we're trying to put the data in teachers' hands so that they can make the best decisions for their students, and also so that we can use our own tests to help inform instruction rather than have to add so many third-party exams.
So in essence, because I remember we had spoken about, or spoke about this before in regards to possibly eliminating some or phasing out some of these standardized testing. Is that the goal, the end goal with this?
Yeah, there's a lot of interconnectedness between the goals, but absolutely, one of the goals, I believe it's Goal 4.1, is to evaluate our assessments. Assessments are important, but it is, you, you can over-assess a child, so we want to make sure that we're, we're giving just the assessments that we need to get the data that we need to make sure that that, that child is prepared to be successful. So we're, we're evaluating our assessments, K to 12. We're also evaluating the data dashboard that we have to make sure that we have one that's very effective to take the assessments and put it in a, a format that's very easy for teachers to use.
Thank you. Thank you.
There was one quick thing I wanted to mention about our meeting. Really impactful part of the meeting to me was discussing about, you know, students and what they might be designated as far as having a strength in a particular subject to take that next-level course, you know, again, while, just thinking about my own kids, while they're under our roof, and we have a little bit more visibility and impact in that regard. And so it hit me that, and you had actually shared this story, we, I, I feel like we all have something that we feel like we're not so good at, whatever subject in the school or whatnot, and so how neat for a student to be able to perhaps be designated as a strong student in, you know, math or one of the other subjects and have this preconceived notion that I'm just not that strong in it. And I just thought about the boost that that gives, and I was going to put you on the spot, do you mind? You had shared that story. Do your kids watch these meetings? Because I don't want to cause a problem in the Finerty household.
My kids are not interested in watching me.
Do you want to share that story? Because I thought it was so neat.
I'm trying, I'm trying, you could start, start beyond it.
So Dr. Finerty was sharing that between his son and his daughter, yeah, that, you got it?
I got it. So we, we were having a conversation about the PSAT test. So the PSAT is a practice SAT test that this year we gave to all 10th graders and 11th graders. It is a very inexpensive test. It is made by the company that makes the SAT, and they also make the Advanced Placement. It's the same company, it's College Board. That data file provides an enormous amount of material, enormous amount of information to help a child in a lot of different ways. So it provides information that a school district can use to assess how good our curriculum is, how good our instruction is. It provides It provides information to the family about how the child is doing on a standardized test and what they can do differently to improve. I'm going to share actually two stories. The PSA data is, for a child that is interested in attending a post-secondary school, a four-year college, they can actually link their PSAT scores, and there's a big firewall, there's no information shared, just your score profile, with a free service called Khan Academy. And again, it is not, it's, there is no danger, there's no, it's a free service, and they can chart a individualized course to help a child address their weaknesses and augment their strengths. My daughter participated in this program. She raised her SAT score something like 180 points in like three or four months. It's a fantastic thing, and it's entirely free. The other story about my children was, in that same file, there is a, there's information about AP potential. And many kids don't think that they have the level to, the academic ability to participate and be successful in an AP course. Well, this file actually identifies kids that have a very good chance of being successful in passing that course and maybe should be thinking about an AP course. And that's the kind of information we want to give to kids. And the story I shared was, my daughter did not think she was particularly good at math and that my son was always great. And then they both took this test, and my daughter cleaned my son's clock. And it just really opened her eyes to what is possible. She did not think of herself as a strong math and science student, and then when she got this information, it opened her eyes. She enrolled in classes and is in college, pursuing a science degree. So this is the kind of information we want to give to families, give to students, so that they could, again, expand their horizons about what's possible and, again, a competitive advantage to Pots Grove kids. So we're excited about doing this, and this is another piece that makes our data dashboard very important because it makes it easy for us to get that information into kids' and families' hands.
Thanks for sharing that. Because, I mean, how many times do we as parents tell them, no, you're great at this? And they might just think, you know, that's the noisy gong mom or dad saying that, or something to that degree. But once you have that data in front of you, you cannot argue with that. So I just, I was really impressed by that piece of the meeting. So thank you. Thanks for sharing that.
I hope that won't be in the paper tomorrow.
Any questions or comments from the board? All right, let's move on to athletics.
Well, we had our meeting, and let me see what the date was we had the meeting. And bear with me, because my eyes, I can't see too well with the lights here. We had our meeting, and we had a full crowd. Mr. Gleason was there, Mr. Lepick was there, Mr. Strunk was there, and we really had a good time. We went over and talked and updated the committee on regarding the Upper Pots Grove Open Space. And this is in partnership with Upper Pots Grove Township and the Planning Committee. So they're very accommodating with the district to find ways that we can develop Hollenbach Park and surrounding areas. So one of the concerns that did come up was, first of all, personally, I think people drive too fast on that route, but the visibility for the kids to cross the street because they're going to do little pathways. And Mr. Lepick, he said he's safe with his kids. You can directly see if there are any cars coming from either direction. So that was really positive. And then we talked about, oh, winter sports. Believe it or not, they're coming to an end soon. Everybody's having their senior nights, which is, again, I hear bowling's doing very, very well, by the way. So just talked about the numbers. Mr. Asbeck was not be able to attend, but he actually gave us all the stats on, showing us the numbers on the growth, and not the growth because of the pandemic. And unfortunately, it's just going to rebuild itself. It's really going to rebuild itself, just like we had, we were talking about the girls' basketball team. They didn't have a JV team this year, but then they graduated 11 seniors and two kids left the district. So really, it just comes in phases. So, and I know that they're already working on spring schedules. Let's see. And then Dr. Finerty went over and introduced the data collection with the surveys in much detail. So that was a much discussion that you actually reported out tonight. But the big news was, just bear with me, we have a new park. It's going to be called Adventure Grove, and it's an inclusive playground for kids with disabilities and sensory issues. The address is going to be on 2291 Gilbertsville Road, which is on Moyer Road and Gilbertsville Road where the aquatic pool is and then the baseball club is. Upper Pots Grove has worked with us almost two years and donated the land to us. So we've been working really, really hard because playground equipment for kids with special needs is so expensive, and you have to do it, you know, in the safety of the kids. So we finally did all our declaration pages, we did everything we could, and I have a committee, and we came up with a name, and we finally got our 501(c)(3) status, which took us over a year and a half. So now we got the blessing because we had a donation of $10,000. So now we're going to have a sign that's going to be the future home of Adventure Grove. So I welcome anybody that wants to get involved with our program. I mean, this is dear to my heart. But to get involved, look at us, you're on Facebook, Adventure Grove. Look at the concepts we've come up with. Like I said, it's taken, and it's not just me, it's taken us almost three years to do. So I just welcome that. We made the introduction to that, and further details will be coming. Any questions?
Well, thank you for that. Let's see, after committees. All right, real quick, public. Anybody, obviously the people that applied. As you can see, most of the work we do is in those committee meetings. Come, please. We had a nice group of people for the athletics, a couple from people from the community and such. So I welcome you to come to those. Move on to new business. Dr. Finerty. Tina?
Nothing for me.
Patty?
Adventure Grove, check it out.
Jay?
I have nothing.
Joe?
Coming around.
Dr. Nipper?
Yeah, I do have something to, we talked about this at the night that the board or members of the board had its advocacy meeting. The Legislative Committee of the IU met, and as we discussed, I was asked to give a report about the lawsuit. And so this is going to be fairly brief and a synopsis, but as you're aware, some of you may be aware of this, William Penn School District, five other districts, and other educational activists are suing Pennsylvania. The districts allege that the state funding for education is unfair and violates the state's constitution. The Legislative Committee of the Intermediate Unit wanted me, as Pots Grove's member, to report to the community and the board members about the status of the suit and its impact on our district. So I'm going to be brief about this, and I'm going to summarize a lot of stuff. The state's constitution requires that the state maintain a, quote, "thorough and efficient system of education." In 2014, William Penn and the other districts sued. In 2016, and the dates are important, Pennsylvania created a formula to calculate the money each district would receive from the state. The formula is called the Fair Funding Formula and was designed to make the funding more equitable and fair. Whether it does that, I'm not going to comment. It is based on an assessment of the district's need and financial capabilities. The new formula gave more money to some districts, such as Redding and Pottstown, and less to more prosperous districts. The legislature decided to implement this new funding formula gradually so that no district would lose funding. The gradual implementation is called the Hold Harmless Clause. This is just what the suit is about. The implementation has been slow, and currently only about 15% of the state's contribution is covered by the Fair Funding Formula. What's the immediate impact of this suit on our Pots Grove budget that we're preparing or starting to prepare now? In my opinion, the likely and immediate impact is nothing. The suit will have no impact on funding or expenses this year and for years to come. The suit started in 2014, eight years ago. It just now, the trial is being held. Furthermore, regardless of who, quote, "wins" the suit, the losing side is likely to appeal. The results will affect our school district for years, not, the results will only affect our school district in many years from now. We need to watch the situation carefully and assess its impact on us as the suit and its appeals proceed. What about the suit's long-term effects on Pots Grove? And this is where it gets personal. If there were no changes in total funding for education, the district would lose not just some, but a sizable chunk of state aid. Some guestimates, and I emphasize the word guestimates, are as high as $700,000. This is unlikely. The total state funding could be increased. In fact, that's the purpose of the suit, to increase the funding. If the funding is increased, that calculation goes out the window. So currently, the state funding to education amounts to 35% of the total that Pennsylvania pays for education, 35%. As a comparison, in 1966, I graduated from high school in 1965. So in 1966, the state contribution was 50% of the total education spending compared to 35% today. As a compare, you know, nationally, Pennsylvania ranks 44th out of 50 states in funding schools, 44th out of 50 states. Other states like Georgia do a better job than we do. The likely outcome is that state spending for education may increase. My focus is solely on the impact to this district. That's the impact of this district long-term and short-term. In short, we do not have anything to do about this suit immediately. Over the long term, we need to watch it. And that's basically what has been discussed at the Legislative Committee, and that's my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Nipper, for being involved in that. I know this is very important, although I know the fair funding changes for us, you know, whether or not we will lose some funds or gain some funds or negligent. You know, we're not going to be affected a lot, one way or the other. It may be a million to the poor, it may be zero, whatever. It does affect our neighboring school district of Pottstown, which is something like $13 million. So this is something that we, I believe, we need to get through because there are, they are our neighbors, and we need to help as much. So I appreciate the effort you guys are doing.
We need to deal with that, but the point I want to make is, the funding went from 50% when I graduated from high school to 35%, and this is not a partisan issue. Both parties have controlled the three, the two houses and the governor's chair in those years from '66 to, the last year data I had was 2021, I think.
Well, thank you. Jim?
Good.
Ashley? All right, I'm actually good. So we're going to move on to public comments. So I have three. First, we'll ask, is there anybody online? No? All right, we're going to say, Andy, you come on up first, you get preference, you've applied, you get definitely a preference for coming up. Obviously state your name and everything.
I greatly appreciate that. Before my time begins, first off, Andrew Corman, Upper Pots Grove Township. I did not speak about this, but I would like a return to normalcy. I'm going to submit this document to Dr. Finerty, and I'm going to send you each an electronic version.
Thank you very much. As always, I stand today for, and every day, for truth, health, and freedom. Last Monday, the 17th, we celebrated Martin Luther King Day here in this country. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. There's a great injustice that has happened to our children these past two years. Here are a few headlines you won't hear on mainstream media or from the government propaganda machine. What did they do to the kids? As a teacher for special needs and underprivileged students, I saw the effects of school closures up close. It was a moral crime. This article was published in The Atlantic, Why I Soured on the Democrats: COVID School Policies Set Me Adrift From My Tribe. These were published in The New York Times. No Way to Grow Up: For the Past Two Years, Americans Have Accepted More Harm to Children in Exchange for Less Harm to Adults. The CDC Conceded That Cloth Masks Do Not Protect Against the Virus. Meanwhile, A Vast Majority of School-Aged Children in Montgomery County Are in Their Classrooms Right Now Wearing Bacteria-Filled Cloth Masks. Give Parents a Choice to Decide What's Best for Their Children. End this Charade That My Mask Protects You and Your Mask Protects Me. Get Your Department of Public Health Out of Our Schools. That's pretty much it. You guys know where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. State your name.
Dustin DiTillo, Lower Pots Grove. Three kids in high school, one middle school, one baby. Thanks to all the candidates. Earlier, I want to let everybody know I was at the sixth-grade girls' Pots Grove, we had a scrimmage against Daniel Boone, it's our second one in a couple weeks. Cindy Coleman's been putting it together. I know she's with the district, she does a lot of field hockey, a lot of basketball. The girls are really good, they, I mean, they kick these other girls' butts. Looks promising for the future. All right. Help and safety. You know, we're like two years into this, there's a group of you, a group of us, I hate to say that, but you guys have put yourself in a box, and you're following these rules, these innate rules that weren't voted on, and they're getting destroyed every day by some other expert. And everybody outside of these rules, this box that you guys created, you guys shame. I kind of, this last couple of weeks, man, I got a lot of threats against me and my kids because apparently I exposed everybody, which was just, the narrative is just absolutely The UK has ended all of this. You got to stop counting these cases and sending out emails. When's it going to be enough? You talk about community transmission, you know, Dr. Finerty, but you don't disseminate any of those numbers. You don't tell us the age. This is the second time I've asked for this. You don't disseminate the age. If it's multiple people testing the same person, if they're asymptomatic, if they're children, if they're schoolchildren, you just say, well, a lot of numbers. Who cares about community transmission? Who cares? All week, I've been working in a jail with COVID inmates. I worked on the quarantine wing. I got to go home and hug my baby and my parents and my family. Like, you got to grasp on the reality, guys. There's viruses out there. It's not a sterile world. This disgusting cloth mask isn't doing anything. I see some of you guys are wearing surgical masks. They're apparently not good either. I mean, it's never going to end.
Time is up, Mr. DiTillo.
Have a good night. Thanks for the candidates again. Janine Clifton, come on down.
And we know, state your name.
Hello, my name is Jeanette Clifton, Lower Pots Grove. Okay, hopefully someone can get back to me on what the district priorities are. I was curious about that. I'm worried about the teacher shortage and how that's going to affect the kids, especially with COVID learning laws. I would think you'd need more teachers. I still believe that supports in school, like BSCs and MTs, need to be in the classroom. That's more important than the fear. And like, the And like the previous gentleman said, that masks don't really work. These don't work. The N95 is the new mask now. So is the school going to, you know, supply those? I mean, where are we supposed to get those? I'd also like to know the intentions of social-emotional learning, the goals and the specifics. If someone could get back to me, that would be great. I'd also like to extend prayers for the family of Andrea Forrest because she passed away. I wanted to thank those who applied for the new position and thank you for taking your time to help support Pots Grove. So, I'm trying to think what else. I feel like, like I said last time, my head against a brick wall. Do your own research. Don't trust experts, okay? You don't, there's differing opinions amongst experts. So you have to choose which one you're going to follow, okay? It's a personal choice, thus freedom of choice, okay? That's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the public? No? Anybody? Last call? All right, then I'm, motion to adjourn? I need a second. Second. Meeting's adjourned. See everybody February 8.